Praise for Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cindy, will you roll call, please?
Os, Preston, Pipia, Graham, Hughes.
Present.
Throm.
Present.
Fry.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
And Barnes.
Present.
We have a quorum, we have six.
There any additions, approvals to the minutes of the December 9 meeting, 2019?
Move to approve.
On the page 505, under number 2, 2020 census, I think I also should put something in there because I mentioned that the November Civics Day was going to be on the census.
The November cen-
Oh, excuse me, December.
I was gonna say, 'cause I thought we just went to that.
Yeah, December.
Any other additions to the minutes? Motion on?
Move to approve as amended.
Second, second motion, second to approve the minutes as amended, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All in favor?
Oppose.
Oppose? Okay. Public comments, anybody that's not on the agenda will have up to five minutes to speak, come up and state your name and your ward. No takers on that. Patty, I'm sure you're here from Marysville Main Street.
She's here.
Or Chamber, excuse me, Chamber.
You have to vote first.
Yep, so I guess if you guys want to come up and speak your positions on it, for against, I know you're both for it, so.
They're here for the contract.
Oh, you're for the contract.
They're the contract, so we need to-
Oh, we need to vote, they're not here for that vote inside of it, huh?
Right, 'cause there's no point in giving the contract if we put that.
Well, before us is a letter from Marysville Main Street and Marysville Chamber of Commerce to vote to let these two entities be one, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Kevin, I think we need more information from the groups because currently we support both, we need to know what they're expecting from the city, how this is going to work.
The meeting I was at, I think what they would like to have happen is to have the funding continue at the level that we're giving to the two entities, and they're hoping that in joining those two entities together, they can kind of cut some of their overhead and use the funding more towards promotion and events and have less of it tied up and hopefully get, you know, one person that can do everything.
But wouldn't, say, the dues structure for whoever joins be adjusted and reworded?
That I'm not sure, I don't know if they addressed that or not, but.
They have a potential dues structure where you basically would be the same as what it is now, before then, for a chamber and a main street member, if I remember correctly. I don't have that kind of darling, I'm sorry.
From what I got from when I was at the meeting, what they were explaining is that they would create a new board with new president, new whatever, there'd be one board. Now, as far as the director and how much money the city would support, that they would hope that we would give them all that we gave before, but that's, that would be once, they don't know until they know how many votes there are and how many people will join, because that makes a difference in how much their dues are, and until they know that, I don't think they know, have any idea.
Well, then, I think that would also then affect our contract with the Chamber until-
The contract is only in effect with the Chamber, if they combine, then the contract goes away.
Correct.
Because they wouldn't be the Chamber as we know it.
They'd write a new contract.
So there really isn't any reason to approve a contract if it, until after the vote?
There is, because they have until the 11th to make their decision to vote on it, and if something falls through, we just, they have to scurry around and actually come and get a contract. This is the way I think we should do it, to approve the contract as is, or if we don't like the contract as it is, that way if something falls through on the combination, they still have the agreement to operate the visitor's center.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, what does the rest of the council feel?
I don't have a problem with approving the contract, and then if they do get the votes to combine, then we, they'll want a new contract.
It'll be a new contract under a sudden new name.
Because I would guess even when they vote, I don't know how long it'll be until they actually do, I think it'd take a little bit of time until you actually combine and work out the key's probably. Maybe.
Yeah, that's fine, please, if you can help, if you can help us on it, yeah.
Patty Hawley, President of the Marysville Chamber, so we came tonight to, on the agenda, to review the contract that we have in place that expires on December 31st. I believe that this, the changes that we made to it were just simply changing the dates to 2020. You're talking about the merger, we do have, the final vote is January 11th at our annual meeting, and we have to, we have to, it's kind of a hard way to operate, but we have to be able to keep operating if it doesn't go through, and if the vote does go through and the merger happens, then we've got to come together and figure out where we go from there. So I guess if we don't approve the contract tonight, then come January 1st, we don't operate the visitor's center, per year, per year, no contract, I guess, I mean unless you've got another, I don't know, we're just trying to figure out how to do this.
Gary?
I think it'd be nice if we made arrangements to extend the existing contract pending on what they're gonna do later, just extend it instead of redoing it and then redoing it again.
I did notice that in the contract, because we were, we were trying to figure out how to word this as well, because it's all unknown to us at this point, and I did notice that in the contract it does say, shoot, and I won't be able to find it, but I think it was that the contract would be, you could terminate it upon 60 days notification from either party.
Number four. Number four.
Thank you, Cindy, yes, it's right there now that I look at it, so, because we just don't know what, what will happen, or how the vote will make a difference, as was mentioned, are those that pay their dues, neither Main Street nor Chamber has sent out letters for dues yet, pending the vote and what the dues structure would be then.
So you're expecting the merger to, if it would happen, to happen shortly? Is there, what's anything about dates?
Well, yeah, it all depends on the, on the vote, and if it's voted to go through, then the new board would form.
This year?
Yes, yes, made up of, I believe that the present plan would be to just have the current boards, those that wanted to be part of the new merged board. So that's.
You are gonna have somebody there all the time, because I know previously sometimes there hasn't always been somebody at the office.
Well, that's, that's part of our hope with the merger, is that we have someone who's the director and then also have another person that can be there in the chair to welcome the visitors, that is hard when the director has to be out seeing members and operating and planning on events, then there isn't anybody, because one person can't be in two places, so that's our hope with the, with the merger, that that will help with that.
If they can't be there, then hopefully you will have a volunteer or somebody there.
We try to, as long as there's a volunteer available, so, yeah, sometimes, I know that sometimes we've been in a tough spot where there just isn't anybody that can, can be there. Okay, we try.
Okay. All right, we'll back up a little bit then, and we'll go back to Marysville Chamber of Commerce and City, send a letter to the City of Marysville to vote yes to combine Marysville Chamber of Commerce and Marysville Main Street into one organization, or vote no to leave the organizations separate. So how does the council wish to vote on this?
I'll make a motion, we vote yes to combine.
I'll second that.
A motion, second, vote yes on it? Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, those in favor of combining both Marysville Chamber of Commerce and Marysville Main Street, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Okay, 5-0. All right, now we'll go to the second part of this deal. 5-0.
5-0, darling didn't vote.
Stand 5-01.
Okay, Chamber of Commerce.
Put me down for yes.
Oh, okay.
I thought she had.
I'm not real, you know, I think we're needing more information.
Cart before the horse.
Yeah.
Okay, as for the contract for the Chamber of Commerce, the 2020 contract, how do we want to proceed with that?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 contract with the Marysville Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second to approve Marysville Chamber of Commerce contract for 2020? Any other discussion on this?
Well, I think that next year the council ought to really look into the support of the total, because what have we been giving, 15,000 to Main Street, and what is the total? Because we give the Chamber and the-
Eight, eight to the Chamber.
And then MCDC?
They didn't receive any funds this year.
Okay.
We have in the past given them 2,000 a quarter as well.
So we give Chamber of Commerce $2,000 a quarter also?
Right, so the total together would be 23,000, 15,000 and eight.
Okay, but we just give, we just give Chamber of Commerce $2,000 a quarter also?
To run the visitor's center, that's correct.
Or whatever.
Any other discussion on this topic this evening?
Because we're also paying the tourism director.
All right.
So, you know, quite a few funds titled totals up quite, quite a bit.
It does. Okay, all those in favor of granting Chamber of Commerce 2020 contract, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Can we just make a motion that we give it 2,000 for one quarter, can we just make the contract for the?
We pay at the end of the quarter.
And we can cancel within 60 days.
And you can cancel within 60 days, so if that vote is July, or January 11th, you can cancel.
The difference, the only difference that you would make is that if their vote fell through, then we would have to revisit this. If it doesn't fall through, then this, the contract goes away.
Yeah.
So it, so it's, you want to revisit it if it falls through, I mean, it's just a simpler way to do this, yeah.
Just doing it twice.
Okay, I'll vote yes.
Policy A85, police chief overtime and holiday pay, I see they've made some additions to the contract, or to the-
Policy.
Policy. Both of those are in the yellow, correct?
Mm-hmm. These were the words that were requested to be put in there.
I move that policy resolution A-85 be approved.
I'll second that.
Got a motion, a second on policy A85, police chief overtime and holiday pay, any other discussion on the topic?
This goes into effect today?
It's clarified, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor of the policy, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Next items, firework contract for July 5th, 2020, from travel and tourism, convention and tourism, excuse me.
Their letter was first.
Yeah, their letter is in here, that they really don't see, they're wanting us to spend the $4,000 that comes out of their budget for the fireworks, and they think that can be, the money can be better used in other places, so their very last, we ask you, please consider the impact of the above events that Marysville have, and that would be best, better ways to spend the $4,000.
And if the contract's 7,000, it'd be 3,500.
3,500, okay.
Well, I think it's a good project for the, for tourism, and also for our local people, and somewhere in there, they mentioned, they thought that the attendance was down, but I know that people watch not just down Lakeview, I don't go there.
Right.
There are various places around town, the cemetery, the country club, the parking lots that, that people watch.
I feel like people are gonna be very disappointed if we don't have fireworks in Marysville.
Yeah, it's always, I mean, we've always won every year, I mean, they're nice to watch and-
I mean, granted, if they don't want to have it on the 4th, then we need to have it on the 5th, we need to have it at some time or another, so.
That's, we're already doing it on the 5th, correct?
5th, correct, yes.
We're not interfering with Blue Rapids' celebration. We discussed this a couple, a few meetings back, didn't we?
Right, that's why we did it.
That's why we're, we're the fifth, yep.
Because we had even talked about, oh, the Clark kid, Sterling, that he does one every year, and if we'd want to just contribute to something of what he does or not.
Well, I personally think it's a draw to bring people, you know, at least citizens of Marysville in here, I mean, I don't know how many out of town people we get to come to our fireworks show, but.
Well, and it's just kind of like the, the Christmas lights, I don't know how many out of town people that actually would bring and would spend money here.
Right, they're nice to drive around and look at in the evenings, so.
Yes, it is.
To the contractor, huh?
So.
I make a motion, we have the fireworks on July the 5th.
Okay.
So approve the contract.
Yes, approve the contract.
Between Aldridge Fireworks and City of Marysville?
Yes.
Okay, made a motion to approve the contract, Diane?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Second?
I second it.
Oh, mine's my second. Okay, to approve the contract, Aldridge Fireworks, of 7,000?
$7,000.
Okay. Yep, all those in favor of, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
NCL.
NLC, NLC service line warranty. I was, I was asked to go out and get other communities' feedback, so I included all their feedback, so it ranged from, we like it, to we don't recommend going with it, so.
Sounds like there's some ambivalence, too.
Yeah, and then we also have a policy that might weigh in on this in our purchasing policy, which is why we included under endorsements, so that might make or break for you, and I'll read the portion of it, or I'll read the whole thing, just, just so we all know why we included it. Endorsements under purchasing and procurement, although the governing body and city administrator reserve the right to endorse and support locally owned products, it is the city's city policy not to endorse or in any way permit any employee's name or position or the city's name to be used and advertised as supporting a specific non-local product or vendor. Requests for references will be limited to actual performance as it relates to customer service, delivery, and product efficiency. So we kind of felt that that would preclude the city from putting their name on this product, i.e. letting them come into town like this.
Although that representative said we can have a, that we do not neither indoors or do, or, you know, which.
So we, yeah, we just put all the information in there for you guys to think about, and so either you approve going forward with the service, letting the service line warranty come in and offer their services, or you do nothing and let it pass, without letting them come into town.
I think we ought to steer clear of it for multiple reasons, but just in general, I think we should let it go.
I agree with you on that, I mean, looking at some of the reports from cities and the mass confusion and stuff.
Exact same things I was concerned about before we got these reports, so.
I had to go work on one a couple weeks ago.
One of these project ones?
I think it actually was HomeServe that I talked to, but they called me up, and they'd been trying to get a plumber there for over a week and add sewage backup in the basement, and so then I went over there and we called, we got through the process, and then the call got dropped, and then we called again, and then we finally got somebody and they put us on hold, after a couple minutes it got dropped again, so I told them, you get ahold of them and call me back, and then once you get it sorted out, I'll come over and do it, and they get back to me till, I think it was Monday, so a few more days went by, and they still, and then still they just gave me a number and I called them, and when I called them, then they asked me, they said, what do you think it is, and I said, it's probably tree roots, and they go, it's not covered, it was not covered, they go, no, any foreign obstruction is not covered, and I said, what does that even mean? I said, so what's covered, and they said, well, like TP, I'm like, if it doesn't cover tree roots, then what's the point? And I think they had a hundred dollar deductible, so I spent more time on the phone than I did doing the actual problem.
Well, that's the problem, I mean, that's what 90% of infiltration causes, is those tree roots and stuff going in sewer lines, so.
Usually.
And what, that wasn't this?
I think, I want to say it was Home Serve that I talked to, I mean, you can actually buy a contract, I mean, you can buy a contract from them right now, there's no guarantee that they've got anybody in the area that's gonna come out, but they always sell you insurance regardless if they got anybody that'll service it or not, they always sell you a policy.
So it was like a home warranty one?
Yeah, that's what it was.
This sounds like the bad thing that would be a good deal for neighborhoods that are pretty new with no old sewer or weird sewer.
There's some of them, I mean, like if you're close to Kansas City or Wichita, where they've got a lot of plumbers that are in their network, or they might have a couple guys that do nothing but only work for this insurance company, then you're probably all right, but otherwise, I don't know, and like is said in here, they're gonna do the barest minimum to get it going.
Yeah, and we want to go better than that for our citizens.
Yeah, I think we're opening ourselves up to a lot of problems.
I am not a fan of them using our letterhead for it, like in here, it's gonna cause a lot of confusion.
Right, it might be something that in the future you might want to readdress again?
If we could get, if the plumbers would get on board and work with them, my experience with a few that I've worked with, they're difficult to, you call, it's late.
A lot of interest in insurance.
Yeah, they're never.
Little as you can, as late as you can.
Yep, they never want to catch in on it, so, okay, the NLC service line, insurance response.
We don't, do we don't need a motion?
We don't need a motion, just consensus, let it go, huh? Okay, replat of the Brockie Estate.
This one, so they are replating it, and the planning commission approved it, I think, and you guys are supposed to approve the easements, the utility easement.
Which are in the yellow, correct?
Right.
Darling, you got anything exciting to come out of your meeting on it?
No, there will, there will be a public hearing later on, January, I think.
Okay.
But that would be on the zoning, is there asking for?
This is just the, the actual plot.
For the easements, for the zoning.
And the yellow is also roads, I take it in there, or is that just strictly?
That's just utility, because they have a private easement between the two properties that gets the driveway back to 4B.
Okay, all right. So replat of the Brockie subdivision.
Move to approve.
A motion, second it?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Notices and hearings, anything you know of?
No.
No?
I don't know of any.
Nope. Nope, pretty, okay, consent agenda, we got the, I'll call consumption, Kestner House, the ambulance contract for 2020, convention and tourism request, revenues and expense for November 2019, and the purchase is 200 cubic yards of adite chips for the seal program in 2020.
And the price for that is $11,392 for those chips, same price we paid this year, the price was gonna go up 10% January 1.
What was that again?
$11,392 for 200 cubic yards, which is what we believe will cover next year's ceiling routes, in addition to what we already have.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Second it.
Second, all in fit to favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
6-0.
6-0. Yes, Gary?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, I was curious on that ambulance contract, did it go up or down?
It went up.
How much?
Not quite 2%, I think just right at cost of living.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because I didn't see anything in the agenda that said what the-
Which way it went, no, it did, it was not put in there, but that is what it was. Right at cost of living.
Appropriation ordinance number 3713.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3713.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call. Os?
Yes.
Graham and Pipia, no. Hughes?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Six, say, room?
One of the, Kevin, one of the transfers in there was, was from a donation, and it was $4,300 donation. was $4,300 donation to the fire equipment from the Leo Ring Trust, so I want to thank the trust for that donation.
We get them a letter out thanking them?
Yep, we sure did.
Okay. I bet you did, so. All right.
Did we ever get the plaque then for Stingleyers?
We don't know where we're hanging it yet, so if we're going to build a new, that thing, you know? Stingleyers, I guess personally already got a plaque, it's my understanding. This was supposed to be one that went up in the cemetery, so we thought they were going on the.
Well, I don't think the plaque was from the city. Wasn't it from the Legion or?
I don't know. They told me that they had personally got a plaque and that we were going to hang one of the. It wasn't, it wasn't from the city, but our understanding where you guys wanted was a plaque to go in the cemetery, right? I could do one just for them personally and then not worry about for the kiosk, but we thought we had to build the kiosk first to figure out where to put it.
I don't know that we ever talked about where, where it was going to be put.
Well, they did, because they said, you know, are you going to put it in the front or where are you going to put it? But if it's just to them personally, not a problem, I can get that plaque done.
No, I think it was to be either in City Hall or, or maybe like at the cemetery, like you said.
Right, so that's why we thought you were putting it, you know, at that kiosk that you were talking about, you know, because ours is falling apart, so if.
I don't think we ever.
I don't know, I just never really talked about a plaque, that's why I wanted to know if it had ever been done.
Yeah, not till you tell me where you want to put it, so I know what kind of plaque to get. If you just want one in the City Hall, I can do that, that's easy enough.
Well, then we need to decide what, we better be deciding.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't forget about it, it's still on the list, but we just didn't know where you were going to put it. I guess our assumption was the cemetery. Since we were told to put together a plan on how, on a design for a cemetery kiosk, that'd be a perfect place to put it.
Yeah, I think that would be.
So that's where we're at, so we were, we were going to design it for right in there once we figure out how we're going to do the kiosk.
Okay, that's fine. That's why we don't forget.
City Administrator. All right, first one up, I included a couple bids for rehabbing the water slides, to rehab the pool slides and the water feature, Fisher Brothers and Safe Slide Restoration. This, each of them said they'd fix the cracks in the slides, recock the seams where necessary, and clean and polish this slide surfaces. They will also rehab the water feature, the dumps of water in the shallow end, and replace the 8x8 pad underneath the family slide. Fisher Brothers did not include the price, hold on, did I say that right? I think Safe Slide. Safe Slide did not include the, the price for the clown, the clownfish. I apologize for that, because they wanted to see it in person, but Fisher said $425 after seeing the picture of it. So I don't, all it needs is some polishing up, I wanted it to look new, like all the other slides would look when they got done. Oh, Fisher, Fisher did include the price, sorry. I looked at the pictures of both their work, and they were satisfactory. I also know that Safe Slide is who the city is aligning contracts with to do rehab on their pool slides. I think they actually do a contract, like they come in every so often and fix it, and if they have extra stuff, I just saw they approved a bid from them last time, or this last year, to do exactly what we're doing right now. Fisher Brothers bid total 26,638, and Safe Slide bid a total of 21,900 without the clownfish. And we're looking, they, they're doing the bids now because they want to do it in the spring. We want them to do it in the spring, so get them, get it on the schedule. So that's what that is.
Does Fisher, do they provide a lift, or do we have to provide a lift for them?
We don't have to provide a lift for them, no. They, they should be able to do all the work. They didn't ask for anything.
Okay, and what kind of warranty do they have?
They don't have.
Well, the Safe Slide, the Safe Slide said they had a five-year warranty. Fisher didn't say anything about.
Uh, I don't know about a warranty on Fisher. What, they provided, I provided you everything they gave me, so I don't know about a warranty on Fisher.
I kind of like that five-year warranty.
I was going to say, we might want to know how much of a warranty they have.
Well, I mean, if Safe Slide has the warranty in there, the lower bidder.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, just so we know what.
You don't think their clownfish will exceed the?
I don't think so. I think it's, it'll be a little polishing, it's just on the front. Everything else about it looks great, I just wanted them to get that clouding, just like they polished this.
Right.
They thought, they thought it was, it's fiberglass, they thought it was a different material, they just wanted to see it hands-on. I think it'll be relatively, and if it's not, then we won't have them do it, it looks just fine.
So if a person wanted to make a motion, since that's not in their bid total, do you just put a do not exceed amount on that to include the clownfish, or?
Expensive clownfish.
I'm fine with that, if you put, let's say they go to $700.
So I could say, I move to approve the bid from Safe Slide with a do not exceed of $22,000, because that'll give you $1,100.
Twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, twenty-three. That's all I.
Sorry. Twenty-three, sorry about that, $23,000 to come out of the pool fund.
Yes, I would be perfectly comfortable with that.
Cheap clownfish.
Yes. That's all my pay.
Make him look new again and happy.
Yep, yep, yep.
You don't have a second on that motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Six oh.
Six oh.
Also included is the, I have the bids for CIPP, we got two bids in, and I included the, just their sheets for us, I also included a breakdown between the other communities as well, the contract or the bid specs we put out there, say whoever is the lowest from Marysville, and that does affect a couple of the other communities, but not by very much. So two bidders, one was Insiiform, which just did it this last year, and Midlands Contracting, who did it the year before that, so we're familiar with both entities. Insiiform total came out to $334,605.50, and Midlands came out to $320,227.40, so the lower, low bidder was Midlands.
That's pretty close for a bid, though, on a project that big, I mean.
Right, and the, what did them under was that they loaded, Insiiform loaded, Insiiform loaded all the mobilization onto us, and put like $500 per every, everybody else, whereas Midlands, along with the lower.
Price per foot.
Price per foot, they spread the mobilization out.
I move that we approve the Midlands bid of $320,227.40 for the cured-in-place piping for next year.
Second?
Second.
I am second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I have some discussion.
Yeah, discussion, go ahead, Derek.
Who, who did it last year?
This last year was Insiiform.
This was who?
Insiiform, which was the, the high bidder, and then, and then the year before that was Midlands.
Okay, I just wanted to know that before the bid.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Six oh.
Six oh.
All right. I put together some information for pay raises for the end of the year as per, or beginning of next year, per request of the council. I got information from a survey done in 2018. There are, it's not perfect, there are some, there's at least one oddity in, in how the, the averages broke down, but I, I put a summary of the averages taken straight from the League of Canes's Municipalities 2018 Salary Survey. I also included the 2018 Salary Survey with that, with the information of population, city populations between 2,500 and 4,000. That put us right in the middle of those two ranges, about 700 population each way, a little over 700 each way. So the information is there for you to look at. I also included the, a couple proposals put together at the request of the council, and some council members that made requests as well, so you can look at those to discuss. So I'll leave that for your discussion, however, whichever way you want to go.
I didn't see anything in there of the list of the towns that was being compared.
It's a, it's a, yeah, they're all at the beginning. Yeah, it's, it's like the first page, it has.
Which page are you looking at?
This one right here. It shows all these communities.
What number is it?
That is page, why didn't, page number come up?
54 or 51.
51. Yeah, it's the last information, last part of the information.
Was there a comparison made on these towns as to how big their budgets are, the geography thing, or?
No, no, I just took straight population.
I think that a lot more study is going to have to be done to address the overall schedules, so we can compare apples to apples, because we need to know what duties they're doing, some, say, the city clerk, some, some towns do not have a city administrator, the city clerk. Some towns have their own utilities. So I think to study, you know, a schedule, that, that there'll be a lot, a lot of work need to be done. I think we could go ahead and approve, say, raise tonight. I ask Austin to run the 75 cents per hour for all employees except police. Do you think the budget can afford that amount, that $48,968?
Yes, and, because 34 would be coming out of general, and 14 out of water, split between water and sewer, however the employees line up, yes, we can make it work.
I move to give all the employees 75 cents per hour raise, that excludes the police department who already received a raise.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve wages 75 cent for everybody except the police department who already got their raises, correct?
Now, are we giving Todd then 75 cents?
Yep, that's what it's showing, yeah.
A motion and a second?
Yes, I did.
All those in favor of giving pay raises signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Six oh.
Six oh.
The, one of the things that didn't make it into the agenda, oh, this should have been earlier, but I'll, I'll talk about the ProTrak first.
Okay.
We got, I put this out on your, your desk, an email from our attorney, I sent him the contract with ProTrak in tennis, I also sent him the letter that they sent and gave him what was being discussed, and he said basically, and you can read your, the email here, that we can do an investigation to see if, what the cause of the damage on the tennis courts and consider taking something against ProTrak withholding payment if it's determined that they have breached their lease by their actions, file a warranty claim, pay the, or pay the agreed upon amount and follow up with ProTrak as suggested in the, in the letter. He said he would not advise the city to withhold payment based upon the information that has been provided. If there's any more information that he needs to know, give it to him, and he would judge on that, or that's a, he'd make an opinion on that. As of right now, he doesn't feel that we should withhold payment, and, but that's up for you.
So we need to pay it and then wait till the spring and then see?
Right.
If there are still issues or not, and then with it then.
I think it's 29 or 27, boy, I don't remember.
I can't remember, but we paid a little bit upfront already, and then.
Paid before, but I thought we kept removing 29,000 or 27,000, it's about, somewhere between 27 and 29,000.
27 and 29,000, yeah.
That's left.
Yeah, and if, if you guys will allow it, we can put it into the, December 30th meeting, continuance meeting, yeah.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
Or just consensus, or?
Consensus to put it back that you will approve it. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to, yeah, if you make a motion now, we send them an advance check, but.
Yeah, no, let's just put it back in.
Just put it back.
Put it back in?
Yeah.
Put it back in for December 31st meeting?
No, isn't it the 30th?
30th.
Excuse me.
Yeah, the 30th, yep.
And what time, is that at 7 o'clock?
It's at 7 o'clock at night, unless you want to change the time. We just need five, five people to come in and approve the, the money, yeah.
The money.
The money.
Cancel the year out.
Yep. Any, if, nothing else, the next thing out on your desk is from Marshall County, we got this on Friday, about the neighborhood revitalization program. They are wanting to re-up the program, and they included a letter. Board of Commissioners, County Commissioners of Marshall County plan to renew the contract Neighborhood Revitalization Plan that is currently set to expire December 31st, 2019. The renewed plan shall be in effect from January 1 to 2020 through December 31st, 2022. There are no subsequent changes to the plan and no changes to the written documentation. However, there are some minor administrative changes that do not have any effect on the substance or implementation of the plan. Enclosed, you will find the notice of public hearing along with the copy of the new plan and interlocal agreement. Commissioners request that your entity consider passing a resolution for your entity that authorizes the entering into the interlocal agreement with the county. You are invited to come to the hearing to discuss any thoughts or concerns you have. We would like to have all interlocal agreements returned on or before the hearing date, if at all possible. Should you have questions regarding the new plan, or would like to discuss the matter, please contact myself or County Counselor Jason Brenner. That was from. That was from Marshall County Clerk Sandra Wilson.
It's been a great program. We've had a lot of people in the community use it. I mean, so, I don't, I don't see why we shouldn't bail on the program. Yes, Terry?
Is there, is there gonna be an extension of the existing?
Same, same thing.
Same thing, no difference in years or amount? Okay.
Absolutely the same.
It's just an extension of the?
Yep.
Yep. You are correct. Need vote on it? Yes. Okay. Need, need a motion on this and Austin's saying for the neighborhood revitalization?
I'll make a motion to approve.
The interlocal?
Interlocal agreement for the, for that program.
Neighborhood revitalization.
Yep.
Second.
You had a second? All those in favor of the agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Six oh.
Aye, that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yep.
Diane, you passed this little piece of information out, you wanna?
Oh, let just said, this was in the newspaper the other day and said, after the move, he was talking about the city commissioners had met and it said, after the move, the city manager recommended commissioners resume their historical practice of considering agenda items for at least two weeks before placing them on their meeting agenda. There's very few things that are that urgent, he said. It gives you opportunity to talk with your constituents and answer questions. It also gives staff the opportunity to take closer look at items as well. So this thing of putting things out in front of us and having to talk about them immediately or vote on them, I don't think it's a good idea. It gives us time to look at things and people to talk to us about them and for us to talk about them. I just think it's a good idea.
Unless it's a real emergency, that's a good idea.
Yes. Yes. You know, we, we have things put in front of us here at a meeting and we don't even have time to even think about them or check on them and I just.
These were not our intention, yeah.
Well, this, this, no. There are some things, but this happens all the time. I mean, like the wages, this came up immediately at the, a couple weeks, a couple, last meeting, you know?
I did, I did say in that that I wanted discussion on this. I gave it in the, in the agenda and said, this is up for discussion. And it did, and it worked out one meeting and two meetings.
We kicked it down the main.
Yeah, you did.
And we do that a lot where we kick it.
I, yeah, but there's a lot of things. And before, previously, a lot of that came up, should it came, went to the finance committee. Other years, we did it at finance committee, so.
It says in our code of ordinances that I need to present to the council any pay raises recommendation.
Well.
And I think, you know, to that point, I think there's, we probably can do better at kicking things out to committees instead of tackling it as the whole council like you were saying.
And that's, that's, that's the form that I'm looking at. I have to bring to the council so the council can decide, okay, we need to kick it to this. I can't, I shouldn't be going, okay, admin, here, I got something for admin finance, I'm gonna call a meeting of that. That should be the council's decision.
So usually it comes to us and then we?
Yeah. And then you guys can farm it out.
Yeah. But it puts, a lot of times you, things, people get put on the spot and, and front of the, everybody and it really shouldn't happen. That's what I'm saying. We shouldn't be put on the spot a lot of times.
And another thing is, we'll have something, business and discussion items, and there will be no supporting evidence to go along with it.
We can't always control.
Well, then it shouldn't be put on the discussion items if, if whoever.
They have no documentation, you don't want.
If they have no documentation.
So just not, tell them not to.
We can tell them they have to have documentation or you don't want.
Which, which we try, which we try our best to do that.
And at the same time, a lot of times we ask for additional, I mean, we do that all the time. We ask for more.
Ask for additionation from them. Yeah, we do.
Then, then tell them then they have to bring it back then the next time then.
Right. And that's your prerogative.
Well, then that's what I'm saying. We just need to have.
And another thing is, they need to be aware that, that, that they have like 15 minutes for the discussion.
You want to use that time.
It's like that NLC circus.
Right, but he doesn't ask that and it's up to us to, I don't want.
It's up to the staff to communicate, yeah.
If you choose, if that's a council decision, then we can tell everyone when they come, they get a 15 minutes, but when you start to interact with them is when we have a problem, we have to know if that's included in their 15 minutes or if it's not included. From what I understand, anytime you open up the floor to anybody, then everyone out there in that crowd has the same right to come and talk as long as however long you left that person at the podium. So.
I don't know about that.
That's what they told me at the meeting. That's what the lawyer told me.
Anyways, yes, I mean, yeah.
Standing committees, street. Diane?
Oh, a couple things.
Todd, did you ever?
On North Street from 20th to 11th Road after the last snowfall, did we blade that? Or was it not enough to be bladed?
It wasn't enough to be bladed.
I didn't think it was.
It was salty.
It was salted?
Yeah, yeah, we put salt down.
Somebody asked me and I thought that.
Yeah, it wasn't enough. We did, we did clear some, there were, some streets that were kind of a danger, but it was not enough to put a blade down.
Okay.
Yeah.
The 500 block of Jenkins over here, we reconcreted that, I don't know, not that many years ago while I was on council, from 6, from 6th Street to 5, to 5th Street.
On the curve?
Yeah, before the curve, a block south of the curve.
Okay.
I remember it being done, so I know it was in the last eight years because I was on council. Did we salt that a little earlier than we should? The joints are, I mean, they've been patching it and it's reasonably passable, but I'd never been on it on a bicycle till recently and it's really going to pop.
If Gary's been in charge, well, I don't, I can't guarantee, but if, I know he's been here, but he keeps to, I know he hasn't been in charge the whole time, so there's no guarantee that they did, they started early. But with Gary in charge, he keeps to a strict five-year.
Don't salt it.
Don't salt.
I suspect that we might have salted that a little early because it's, I mean, you get from the joints, it's coming back four or five inches. It's, for a concrete street that's six, eight years old, that's pretty bad. Especially since we invest in those streets hoping they'll last.
Yes.
I figured that was kind of a free deal. The other ones all seem to have held up. I just didn't know if making sure it's something we recognize what happened.
We have, we have a map. I'll, I'll ask them about it, but we have a map that says.
And they've done a good job of patching them in. It's like I said, you don't notice it in a car, but when you're on a bike, you're like, we patched this new street already.
Yep.
Well, talking about Jenkins, when is, will 7th be 7th and Jenkins to, what would it be, 12th Street? Concrete be redone? Because that's getting really bad.
We don't have, next year's project is down here, it's 14th, it's Broadway, 14th and 15th, so we don't have that, not next year.
It's up that steep hill. Yeah, it's really broken up, shoot up.
Right.
Which one's up?
It's the steep hill that kind of goes just north of the Boy Scout Cabin property, between there and that oil tank and all that.
Could be all the way to 12th Street, 7th to 12th.
That first two blocks I know east of, of 8th is especially bad because it's so steep, you really notice it.
They'd probably sand it or salt it.
Oh, I'm sure they salt the heck out of it because it's steep too.
It's steep, yeah.
And that might be one that, if you replace it, you'd want to go asphalt maybe.
Just because of the salt.
For the.
You know, those ones that are hills, you can't really not salt them.
Right. I don't know where that one ends up on, on the plan.
Yeah.
Diane, you had something?
Did I see somebody out working on ADA ramps the other day?
We've been pouring some, some concrete, yes. I think there's a couple ADA ramps where we've been doing some valve work too.
Okay.
So it's been our, or yours not?
I haven't seen, Inline hasn't, I don't think Inline started.
I don't know who it was. I just, I, I didn't know who was working on them. I just thought I saw somebody doing something the other day.
We've been putting in valves or replacing fire hydrants or whatever, and while we're there, we put in new, new ADA ramps. I'd have to know where to have it.
Well, weren't we supposed to do some more this year?
Yeah, ADA ramps, we gave them until March 29th, or May 29th to finish up that project. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anybody else have any on streets?
I got one question, Mara.
Yeah.
We've got a contract that's kind of out of compliance up here north of town. We, we gotta do something to readjust or something on that because the concrete streets that's supposed to be put in up there are out of compliance right now.
Hurley Ridge.
You guys asked us to set a date for them. We already talked about that.
What date did we set?
We didn't. We.
You did what?
You, the council asked us to address it already. You guys already asked us to.
So what's been, what's happened then? That's what I want to know.
Nothing, they can't, they're not pouring concrete yet. I'll have to ask David what date we're setting, but you guys asked us to make them, make sure they got it done.
Well, that's for sale, but we ought to get our figures in order. We've got people that we're hiring to do work for us that are out of compliance.
That has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
I think we do need to follow up and make sure we get a date set sooner rather than later. Even if it's a farther date, we just need to have it lying in the sand.
Right.
Yeah, because it should have all settled out by now.
Yeah.
I think so.
It's been two years, so.
Either that or we just need to change the contract or something if it's gonna go on forever.
What's 26, I would think it was June of 2016, wasn't it, or something when it started?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
I think so.
They've had a couple extensions, haven't they?
Yep.
Yes.
I'll follow up with Dave. Okay. Water and wastewater treatment. See, the guys are still repairing valves and all that going around.
Yeah, installing new water meters so we can get that system going.
Storm, storm drain and lets, there's a number of them around town that are, I know we've replaced them here and there. Do we have like a master list of those that we're replacing as we go or is it just on a kind of ad hoc basis?
Ad hoc basis, because we, we don't have a total, I mean, we have somewhat of an inventory, but that's what the whole mapping is about, to get that. They have listed some issues that we need to address, so that's where that comes in. Yeah. But when we can, we do replace.
It seems like lately I've noticed more of them that either have the lids or the roofs of them smacked and kind of got hit by a truck or.
Right.
They're plenty big enough I could climb in.
Those, those are more challenging to pour. It's like a three-pour thing and you have to have multiple.
Takes a lot of forming and stuff, I guess.
I was really surprised at one down by the superintendent's office. They didn't replace that one when they went by. Because that metal roof caved in on that one while they were working on the project.
Hmm.
Probably should have got replaced then.
Yeah, so.
There's a manhole on the corner of 5th and Carolina. This had a cone on it for the entire year. And I've been patiently not saying anything, waiting to kind of see, and I realize it's late in the year, but what's, what's, when do we think maybe that's gonna get addressed?
I'll have to check with, check on that, because I think it's.
They're by my rental. So I haven't been bringing it up. I don't want to advocate.
Yeah, there's been a cone right there, yes.
And I say, because somebody, because somebody went by there and they must have cut it short to miss that cone and they took a chunk out of that nice new curb that they put in with the ADA ramp here last year.
Well, the, are the sawhorses still there or are they gone?
The sawhorse is gone today, there's just a cone out there. But they've been driving over like the corner of my rental property there, if it's a big truck to miss the cone for, since like March.
See if we can get that.
I'll check on it, yeah.
I mean, I realize it's late in the year, but.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cemetery and airport. I see Dave got the.
It was.
Huh?
It was.
No, it was fixed out there, so, shortened the wires, so.
Did you skip over Parks and Rec?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I did, sorry. Parks and Rec, sorry Darlene.
Well, I, I don't know if this fits in there. This is from Michelle White soul's tourism update and she has in here that sitting down with the representative from the Blue River Trail and MHS, our teacher to discuss signage for the new trailhead at the Tourism Main Street Office. And you know, the K-State students are working on signs and, you know, here we've got two different groups and we talked about.
I think they're talking about the exterior of the building rather than putting up a street sign or anything like that.
Okay, so that is.
So like just go right on the building, here's where you go to the bathroom, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Then another thing is, she talked about updating 2020 visitor guides, maps and brochures and, you know, we, we talked about hours at the Kester House, visitor hours or, and what, when, you know.
When we were gonna start it and stuff, yeah.
But they're already talking about doing brochures and, you know, that ought to be kind of coordinated.
Because you have that information and lots of.
The one, yeah.
Yeah, last meeting's agenda on the.
And the one before.
And the one before.
On the amount of tour, or tourism that was, went through there during those months, so.
Well, now we're gonna combine Main Street and, and the Chamber of Commerce, we might want to coordinate that a little bit before we get into anything too deep here, so.
Coordinate? What do you mean?
Well, I mean, if they're gonna be one entity or what they're gonna do, you know, who's going to, are we gonna have two offices or are they gonna have one office?
They would have, I think the idea was to move down to the corner, Main Street down to the corner, yeah.
Okay, so we're not gonna want to have, we're not gonna want to have an, an address for the chamber office up there.
Oh, in the brochures?
On the brochures or something, so, you know.
Wait, what? Oh.
I don't know what the brochures say.
No, the, the chamber, that office will be there. We'll, but we'll still have Convention and Tourism down here. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, you said you were gonna have the office down there.
So Main Street will be.
Chamber and Main Street will still be right there.
On, on 10th Street.
Or will still be at, or Main Street will move down to there, to the corner.
So Chamber, okay, so Chamber stays at the corner and Convention Tourism stays down at the city built, owned building.
Yes.
And Main Street moves from the city owned building to the Chamber.
Which they're really not inhabiting the mains.
So is that set in stone now?
That's what it sounds like, yeah.
But if the vote doesn't go to combine them.
Right.
Then that won't.
All bets are off.
Right. And they're fully aware of what's going on right now. I mean, it's, yeah.
But I'm saying before we'd be printing up brochures and stuff, I would say, we need to be sure what's going on before they start printing up brochures, is what I'm saying, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until they know who's gonna be where for sure or what's gonna be where.
Right.
And when do we set the hours for these, or do we?
We're not gonna set them right now.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
But we, these council does or who does? I'm asking you, I don't know.
The council, this is, it's our property, so you guys can do what you want.
So before they print brochures, you know, we need to, the council needs to talk about it. All concerned need to communicate.
I didn't know. Hey, because I know we had a lot of discussion on that earlier this spring on.
So I would probably recommend that sometime at the beginning of the year, set up a meeting with the foundation or whoever to talk about that.
Right. Before they print brochures, is what I'm saying.
We, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but she's already talking about.
She's talking about new information in the brochures, but.
But ordering them. We gotta get the old information correct too.
She says ordering them, so before she orders them, it's gotta be communicated.
Because we don't want to throw out a bunch of brochures or they don't want to. I mean, that's, that's wasted money.
Well, it's printed, it's what we're gonna have to do this year. Well, we don't need to do that. We need to make sure that dates and facts are correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I jump back to street?
Yeah, you can jump back to street, Todd.
I know we're going to be replacing it soon enough, but the corner of Center and 10th.
It's not gonna be warm enough to fix.
It's so rough. Do we not have any cold mix or anything?
We won't have. We won't have.
Slap a patch on it, cause it is rough going down that corner.
We slapped a, we slapped a patch on it and it did what it did. That didn't last very long.
Can we grind the edges to bevel them so that it's not?
We don't have a grinder.
Well, we need to get a grinder, I think I said that three years ago.
I'd see what Gary can do, but?
It's really, really rough. I mean, I've seen cars kind of whoop around it.
Slow down, slow down.
Whoop right by the chamber office.
Did you tell us last time it didn't even last three days?
I was gonna say, it didn't last very long.
It did not last very long, no.
It was like throwing your money.
Well, it's turning, so turning traffic's hard on roads, I know.
Especially on a temporary patch, Terry, yeah, on top of brick.
I watched a car kind of go whoop and like a bad suspension.
Are we gonna be redoing that?
Did you see what a piece of?
If we have anything just to get less rough?
Uh, Stella told, or was it Don, Donald told me about that and the first question I had was, did it ruin my street? And he goes, no, it's fine. Okay.
Nice gouge in it though.
Well, no, it, it's not a gouge, it's just that white streak where if you?
Oh, scraped it?
Yeah, just scraped it, it doesn't, it's not terrible. Yeah.
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 Police and Fire. Admin and Finance.
Something I might bring up, and I see that Paul's here. He wrote this, this article. Did anybody talk with Paul about the, in the second paragraph that it wasn't quite correct, the way it was written?
Yes.
Okay. Cause it, it says 42,000 to raise wages by one dollar per hour. That was for the people listening, that was one dollar per hour for the managers of each department and 50 cents for everyone else.
That, that we didn't correct, we?
There were some other things.
Diane wanted me to recant some other stuff in there until I did.
Okay, so are they gonna run a?
Well, I don't, that, that part I did not talk to them.
Okay.
So, but the other part they were, yes.
What part?
About the vote that was incorrect in, in November.
About, about the holiday pay?
Right, correct, and that will be corrected. That was, was correct, that was not, actually, it wasn't even Paul's fault, someone else tweaked that article, so it's okay.
Paul's okay.
Paul's okay.
He tried to do the right thing. And then there's, Barnes said that the street department employees require quite a bit of training as well as, as well as the police. Is it, what is the cost for training a police officer? Carla told me it was around 28,000, but does that include the?
I don't know what it costs to go to the academy.
Well, it's, it's hours and?
Pay.
Yeah.
Meals.
All that stuff.
Hotel, mining.
They stay at the academy.
Yeah. They might do, they might, well, it's a part of the?
It's part of what you pay.
Plus, plus it's 40 hours every year of training and all that stuff. And yes, but?
So actually, I mean, we invest a lot?
Oh, yeah. Do we pay extra for the academy or is it just the people's hours, right? That's part, it's just the hours, we pay the employee that they don't work here.
Right.
Cause we don't pay the academy any money.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was true.
Yeah, they get a?
It's just whatever their regular wage would be, whether they were running a beat or they were down there training.
But the other employees who go for training, it's usually a day or a couple days or?
Yeah, 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 yes.
So much less than, it's not really comparable.
Well, it's a lot of on the job training.
Yes, it's a lot of on the, on the job training. So that's really pretty good, you know, a beginning teacher in this district is paid $35,000 their first year. And they've had to invest four or maybe five if they go to KU years that they pay for training themselves. So, you know, something to think about.
Terry, do you have something there?
I want, you still on police and fire? I know we just recently lost an officer who's a big man, but I also know that we spent a ton of money on his vest. Did the city retain that so that if we get another cop the same size, he can use it?
They are personally fitted to each person. It's not, it's not a general, it's not a large, it's a, it fits to him.
Okay, that 2,000, or whatever it is, $2,000, it's gotta be?
I'll have to, I'll have to check on, on where that's at. I don't know if he needed a vest where he went.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention.
Right.
Administration Finance, no appointments. Guess round table. Terry?
Go ahead.
Nope.
Well, Merry Christmas, everybody.
That for you? Terry?
One thing I thought would be a nice Christmas present for all of us, if there was some way we could work it out when we adjourn this meeting, that we could call that 30th meeting to order and take care of that tonight too, and then we don't have to worry about coming in to see you on the 30th. And that'd be a neat Christmas present.
You're absolutely right.
All you gotta do is go, I move that you spend whatever you want. We will, we will be happy to not make you come in.
Well, if you give me a reason I want to. If that could be arranged, I'd sure like to do it tonight.
We have to get all the, we have to get all the bills in mind to make sure that, yeah.
We couldn't just sign something tonight and know that you got them right?
I would, I would love?
I, I would not be in favor of signing a blank check.
Darling.
I'm an ex-bankman.
We'll be back.
Thanks to Austin, Cindy, city staff for putting together the Christmas party Saturday. Pretty good times, nice to show appreciation to all of our city employees and thank them for another hard year of service and service to their community, so thanks for putting that together.
Thanks for the Christmas party and thank you for the treats.
Yeah, who are the treats from? Thank you, Austin. Did you actually make them?
Thank you, Sandy.
Yes, I did. Diane?